I'll call this emergency meeting of the Onslow County Board of Education to order. Our attorney, Mr. Irwin, will be here in just a few minutes. And thank all of you for coming. I appreciate the members of the board who could attend the commissioners' meeting today. I think it was a pretty solemn affair. I'm glad we had the dialogue. You know, Joel Churchwell taught me a lesson a long time ago when he first came on this board, and he said he didn't care who got the credit for things as long as things got done. Well, I don't know that there's any credit to give to anyone today, but I know that we are all in this blame game together. We should have had conversations, and our commissioner should have reached out to us as well, long before today. Today's kind of short. We don't have a long timeframe now to get our schools ready. So I take part of that blame, and I think that those of you who sit around this table know that we should have had that conversation before today. We left the conversation on Sunday with a different idea of what was going to happen today. And Mr. Stout doesn't have to feel that if he doesn't want to, but I will share that we were expecting a lot more money and assistance in funding from the commissioners. And today was kind of a slap in the face because it was totally different than what we were left with on Sunday. Isn't that correct? So moving forward, we're going to have to make do. And we know that we have received some funding. I want you to know, I'm a little disappointed that today I heard we received funding of a million dollars or expecting it from somewhere, and $500,000 that the board hadn't even been informed of. That would have made me feel a little bit better. I think we need to be informed when we're getting these amount of monies so that we at least know that we're moving forward. So I expect that in the future from our staff. Today, we're here, though, to not only talk about the hurricane recovery and how we're moving forward, but what decisions we have to make. I spoke to, while we were in the commissioners' meeting, Representative Shepherd called me, and I called him back. In fact, he responded to my call right outside here. And I asked him, "The things that they can do for us on the legislative level is not only to get the money, but to get it to us." You know, you can promise us that you're going to give us $25 million, but how long is it going to get to us? We need that money now. And I asked him, "Could he please see if he could find out how much of the $25 million that the governor has said that he's going to release from the lottery money? How much of that is coming to Onslow County? And can we get a letter from the government's office attesting to that's how much we'll get?" Because it's my understanding, after today's conversation with the commissioners, we need some verification that we are going to have those funds for Jeff to disperse at a future date. With that being said, I will turn this over to Mr. Stout, and we'll move forward. But I really, we're in this together around this table, and I appreciate you being on the same team as, with all of us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, that was a tough meeting we all sat through, and I know it was a tough meeting for the county commissioners to have to sit through as well. Obviously, we're faced with a dire need of needing some money that will infuse and allow us to be able to continue cleaning our schools and allowing our schools to be open as soon as possible for students to enter. This is a costly project that we're facing. We actually went in today asking for authorization, up to $50 million, basically, so we can continue the process of trying to get this completed, knowing that this is just phase one of where we're heading. After listening to the county today as well, members of this board heard that really we were looking at leaving that meeting, not having any money coming our way, basically seeking out the LGC for a loan. And honestly, to those who weren't there, I made it very clear that we needed some money immediately, and I think Commissioner Bennett, who's in our audience, also helped us in knowing that we had to have a bridge in terms of having some money infused, at least to keep us afloat for a week or two in terms of we find out more solutions or loans or whatever that money might be coming our way. On Sunday, our meeting was held with the county manager, and we had good conversations that that was going to be quite a bit more money coming our way from that expectation on Sunday, completely changed the forecast today. And it was disappointing on our part in terms of walking into that meeting, not having an idea that was something that we're facing. But I'll say it again, we have taken the risk as a school system to spend our money on as much as we could to get the process done. Being in this business for 32 years, this has been the toughest task in my experience in education like no other, and really it's a one lifetime experience. But being able to manage the entity of having 38 schools of some type of damage and some type of work going on has been complex. Certainly, information was asked for today that we'll be glad to provide to the county as well as to those in this room. Not only are we facing a continuing battle of conditions within our school and knowing when schools will open, right now we have a capacity of having about 50% of our schools getting ready to be ready or clean for students to come back to for long, but we still have a number of schools that are unknown in terms of anywhere from 65% to 80% complete. So we still have quite a bit of work that we're going to have to. And we've got some question marks down here still in terms of our schools going to be able to be open anytime soon. So we're going to be faced with some options at the end of this week that we might even have to merge a school or two because it won't be anytime soon that they could actually get into. And that would be like a Swansboro High School that still has no temporary roof on it, as well as Queens Creek that has massive shingles off it and so forth and so on. So we might have to look at sharing schools and sharing that capacity in some way, which would make it even more complicated. But I can assure you, my staff, we started at 7:00 yesterday morning and went to 6:00 last night and didn't even leave the room other than use the restroom, and we ate lunch inside, just trying to figure out which school is a go, which school needs more work, and trying to break it down from that standpoint. One of the issues that we've been facing is insurance and trying to get adjusters in here to tell us how much will be covered. And we talked about finances, trying to speed up the process of getting money in from the insurance company so we can continue to do the work that we're currently doing. We hired a guy named Harrison Jones, who's a consultant. He comes out of Raleigh, has done a lot of arbitration. I think he had 38 years of experience in the business that has worked for insurance companies for a number of years as well as clients to bring the expertise in here to let us know, you know, and answer questions for us in terms of if an insurance person comes in or an adjuster, what they're looking for, how can we provide correct information? And then if they question something, how do we respond back to them the appropriate way? And also knows the insurance back and forth in terms of what they'll be looking for as well. So it's been very informing for us and our staff in a process way, and he's helping us organize that as well. And in turn of that, we hired the firm Brown, Crump, Varnor, V A N O R A, and Tillery out of Raleigh. And it's actually Craig Tillery is the attorney in that firm. He's an expert in insurance claims, and he has worked, again, both for a number of insurance companies as well as a number of clients. And he has no conflict with DPI Insurance, was able to take us on as a client, and has been working with Alex Irwin, our attorney, as well. Very, very knowledgeable. He's done a lot of big claims such as we have right here and making sure the policy that is currently in place that we have has critiqued that, as well as making sure when this process goes that they're held accountable for everything that they should be held accountable for. There are a lot of disagreements in terms of when an adjuster comes and looks at a roof and they say, "Our roofer, our estimator says three quarters of this roof has been damaged," and then an adjuster may come back and say, "We're only going to pay 25% of it." So we need somebody on our side that's going to be for sure to have an expert there that says that we're not off in terms of what we're asking for, and we expect the insurance company to cover that. Those are the type of things that we have to document, and we're doing that from paper trail to pictures and everything else you can imagine. So we're really trying to make sure our Ts are crossed in that way. So our insurance companies would be responsible to pay us what they should be paying us, and that's the accountability piece I think you would want us to have, and also the county as well to make sure that money's coming back to you. So we have great representation in those two areas, in areas that I am not an expert in or the ones that are around us in this table. So after the meeting, they, $5 million is somewhat of a, you know, a bridge for us to continue with this. And I'll have to sit down, be honest with you, with our current contractor and talk to him and find out what length of time that's going to buy us in terms of them being on the job. And then in the process, Jeff Holloman will be commissioned to work with David Cotton, our county manager, to work with the LGC or whoever. One request, I'm going to hope to find out if we can't ask the General Assembly to provide zero interest loans for repair work like they're doing for new schools in disaster areas. The $25 million that has come down from Governor Cooper that hasn't been assigned to the eight counties yet and how it's going to be broke out will help us in some respect, but obviously will not cover for the authorization that we need to cover the $50 million to complete the process for our children getting back in. Timeline for children getting back in our school, and we looked at that very carefully yesterday, as painful as it sounds, and really it has, and frustrating, it looks like next Thursday is a possibility of some schools coming in or as late of Monday from this coming Monday, on the 22nd. And we should have a large number of schools that will be ready for students to come back in between that Thursday and the 22nd. Talking to the superintendent in Pendleton County, his timeline was pretty much, I talked to him last night, his timeline was pretty much the same as ours because they're dealing with the same things at Topsail, which is, you know, very close to us. So you can see, you know, the resemblance of where the storm has come in and how hard it's hit our two counties. What I'm going to do is kind of open up the table for questions on those type of things so I can answer as many as I can in that regard and tell you where we're at.
Paul?
Mine's not a question. I just want to be sure, Superintendent Stout, that the public understands we don't raise monies. We're not, we're a school board. Our monies come from state, from federal, and from our Board of Commissioners. And we're doing all the repairs that we can do right now. Correct me if I'm wrong when I finish. But I want you to understand, and I know we had in the paper a week or so ago, the legislature allotted us $56.5 million that was to be divided with eight or nine districts. Then the governor yesterday with $25 million, and it was supposed to be divided. It's okay to allot those things, and I'm not knocking that, but I want you to know, we haven't received any of that money. Not one dime from the state, not one dime from the governor. Today, we received $5 million from the commissioners. Until that point, we received none. We never received any monies. And the folks doing this work, we had a fund balance of $7 million, and I think we've used all that. We want our children back in school. You're looking at former educators, me with 39 years. I want the kids in school. That's my passion. That's why I do what I do. That's why these board members are doing what they do and the staff that works here. And I said the other day, and I'll say it again, I'm concerned about seniors that are going off to school next year. And come the end of the year, they've got to take in the course test, and those in the course test count 25% of their grade. I couldn't teach Algebra II in calculus in 60 days while I used 90 days. You can't get it done. And the little folks who are home and they're not in school, I want you to know this board, once I'm in school, we're ready to take risks and do what we have to do. The people that are doing our work, have we paid them any money?
Only the money that we've had out of the fund balance.
Yeah, our fund balance. So, and it's costing us, what, $500,000 a day, something like that? That guy, that company needs money to pay his employees and his staff to, it's a miracle he's still working. And I understand that he was going to have to pull his folks off if we don't come up with some money. I've said my piece. That's how I'm feeling.
Thank you.
For clarification. I believe you said in the previous meeting that we're averaging about $700,000 that's being paid out daily.
That's the last estimate we had from the vendor as far as what the burn rate is of the expenses that they're going to...
So the $5 million will keep us going, will keep that company going for...
It's approximately a week's worth of...
So once that money runs out, we don't get any money from the state, doesn't come down I-40, they have to shut down, basically.
I'm looking at today...
Worst-case scenario.
Yeah, I'm looking at today as being a very short-term stopgap measure that allows us a little more time, being directed to work along with the county manager to try to expedite their pursuit of, along with the local government, along from the local government commission or getting the approval through the local government commission so that we can continue out the entire first phase of the mitigation process and being able to open schools. So that's a very short-term measure to get us a little bit further down the road, working towards these other steps.
The absolute worst thing would be for that company to stop working. Not only do we have to answer to our children and our parents, we have to answer, someone has to answer to the community. And I think you pointed out, and you kept on pushing, it's a bridge. It's just a bridge. And without that, and I give credit to Commissioner Mr. Bennett for pushing that because I could not, and I understand the situation the county is in financially and so forth, but when the superintendent goes up to you and says, "I'm broke. I'm broke. Help me." Thank goodness we got that money for that bridge. And I think back to 2007, Onslow County, I think was the first county on the East Coast to proclaim that there was tsunami prepared. And that's great. I mean, I don't think I want to be close to a tsunami, any of us do. But the aftermath, as far as I'm concerned, this is our tsunami. We may be prepared through, with telecommunications and everything, but the aftermath of trying to clean up, particularly the impact it's had on our school system and our children. But I thank you and Mr. Holloman, Mr. Stout for pushing just the bridge, and the commissioners did provide that. So we just need to move. We are in an emergency status that no one here has ever experienced. It's an emergency, capital letters. Thank you.
I also wanted to thank Commissioner Bennett. I really appreciate your understanding and your respect.
Let me address it from a standpoint of a non-educated as a businessperson. And one of the concerns I have is that as business entities, and we're all government business entities, is that we don't seem to be talking with one another very much, and we're not working with one another very much. And that's critical at this point. We've got federal, state, and local agencies all involved in this process. I was a little disconcerted when I found out that our insurance policy was a government-funded policy. I'm concerned with that. All insurance agencies have to protect their interests, but government insurance agencies, I would assume, would be empathetic to the needs of the clients that they serve. We pay over $500,000 a year in our premiums for this policy. Our claims, or our estimated claims that we have iterated here are upwards of $125 million. There's absolutely no reason that we shouldn't have gotten $20 or $30 million upfront on this based on what our initial is. They know that there's going to be claims. I've been concerned over the fact that we don't have a breakdown by schools. I talked with Jeff Holloman just before this meeting started, and he explained to me that the state adjusters that are representing, that are coming out of state, they're not part of, excuse me, they're not part of the DPI. They're hired guns, basically, to come in here and do adjusting work, just like all the other insurance agencies are hiring people to come in here and do the adjusting work. We don't have enough adjusters. The first time they came out, they came out and they went to three schools, and they basically cut off and said, and they just did the rooftops at that point, and went out and said, "We've got to go to other counties. We've got other clients that we have to attend to." Jeff just told me today that the first adjusters to come in and look at the insides of the schools got there today. We're a month after this event has happened. That's unacceptable. It's unacceptable to me. It should be unacceptable to the people that are hiring these adjusters to get out here. I understand we have a magnitude that the East Coast hasn't endured in a long, long period of time, but the lack of preparation, the lack of support is appalling to me. I just don't understand why we haven't been able to do that. Excuse me, we've got, we've got monies that have been promised to us. When the first $50 million was authorized by the legislature, I questioned that. I talked with representatives, talked with the senator, and asked them at that time, you know, "Why is such a low amount?" It basically was the mats. They're supposed to go back in session, I believe, on the 15th to discuss this more. We've got a disaster preparedness fund. I understand they need to do their due diligence. I understand that we need to get our information, but I don't know what else we can do at this point. We've reached out to the locals. We have reached out to the, to the state people. I had a short conversation with Senator Tillis last week. Everybody has promised us, but if you have ever been around government entities very much, you understand that you've got to have all of the paperwork done before the first dollar is dispersed. And we are cash-strapped. We don't have any money right now, and we're looking at a situation that is untenable. I would very much like to see, and you talked about we may have to double up on some schools and get them back in. What is our plan if we can't open the schools? Are we going to wait till we can consolidate all of that, or are we going to start opening some schools and run a multi-track calendar?
We're going to have to, so I can answer that. So we're going to probably open up some schools, and some schools will not open at the same time, just based off the conditions of the schools and a number of schools. We want to open as many as we possibly can, and then we're going to track the rest of the schools in as they come forward. But there'll be some schools that, so far down the road, that will have to share maybe the capacity of another school. Now, obviously, those who did the tour noticed the White Oak High School, the Swansboro, I'm not Swansboro, Southwest High School. There's areas that can be isolated, and they can still use the building, but we have to, they've already contained those areas, and now they have to go back in and clean those areas that we're going to use. That's going to be over cramped, class sizes are going to be large, but we're going to be in situations like that for quite some time. And most of our schools are going to be cramped because a lot of our temporaries are now in the process of not being able to be used. I mean, I think when you talk, when somebody said 10% of 220, that means you've got 22 to 25 temporary classrooms now no longer accessible for our schools. So we're looking at different challenges as well when we do get back to school. But we are planning, like I say, those dates would be the earliest because right now air quality, as I said before, we're not going to put anybody back in until, one, we have that certification from our hygienist to say our air quality is good enough in school for those children to come back in. Now, we got air quality cleared, but no certification yet. And the reason is, it has to be re-inspected, and they're in the process of doing that. Now, we had everybody around the table. I had Slate Industries, which they're in charge of the hygienist. I had Ben Bass, who's in charge of the services. They sat with us all day yesterday and looking at each school in terms of, you know, the estimated time of them coming back in. So they're early as we could, to be fair, because here's what most people understand. Our freezers are empty. Food's not in there because it was all destroyed. So they have to reorder the food, and it takes a week for the food. So if we put it in order today, food will be in next Wednesday, right? So I can't start on Wednesday, which we were looking at as a possible date, but they have to have food to come in. So food is going to be delivered and be in our freezers and be ready for students, you know, for next Thursday as the first possible date to start. But it could be we need the extra two days because obviously we've got to get teachers in too, at least work a day or two to get their classroom set up, because their classrooms are not going to look the same as when they left it because it's, every classroom had to go through a thorough cleaning, as they are right now. We've asked for additional resources for our military to come in and help us speed the process up for Marines. And we're supposed to have word today on how many that might be. And we really do appreciate the partnership on that. But it's a numbers game. Why is it 700,000 burn rate is because we added more people to come into our area to do more cleaning so we can expedite this opening quicker. So it's complex, and I wish we could be more detailed in a lot of ways, but it's very fluid in terms of what we find as we go through the process. We had fire alarms that weren't working, and when fire alarms aren't working, you've got to be on a fire watch and have somebody there every 30 minutes doing a report and looking out. So there's a whole lot of scenarios that change on that. We used every piece of equipment east of Raleigh trying to replace some of our fire alarms to make sure they were adequately working. I've got one school that's still down, and that's North Side High School. Is that correct?
And we only have 13 schools right now that have been green-lighted with the preliminary air quality.
Yesterday, 13 as of yesterday, and some of those were going back and getting re-inspect because there might have been something underneath the desks that didn't get cleaned properly. So there's certain classrooms that have been highlighted on that. So I got this right here when I walked in here today, and this is what we normally do. So if I wasn't in that meeting with the county commissioners this morning, we meet every morning for daily updates in terms of where we're at. Dr. Folter, how many schools?
So this morning, we have 18 schools that have been cleared with the air quality, which has a capacity of about 15,200 students. We have, at this point, 27 mobiles in those 18 schools that have been damaged and are unusable, which decreases our capacity to about 14,500. And our 10-day count for the schools is over 13,000, which is about 50% of our students. And Mr. Stout, if I could just add there, additionally, after that air quality's been cleaned, there are other things that still have to happen besides food. There are playground inspections, making sure the fields are clean, the debris is out, intercom's checked, carpets replaced, additional items. After the air quality, there's still all those things that have to occur before we can get kids back in buildings.
And because we had a water boil advisory, you know, you've got to go in and flush everything. That's just, you know, people don't think about all the check-offs that we have, but it's quite a feel on that. But, you know, again, when we put students back in these schools, it's going to be right. And the last thing I want to do, and the consultant reminds me because we were talking about frustrations, you know, of parents as well as staff, was take a deep breath, make sure you do the right thing. Don't, don't, don't let your patience run short. Put them in when you know it's right, and that's what I'm planning on doing.
What about the year-round schools and the magnet schools that receive less damage? When can they, when do you have a timeline for them? It seems like they turn around faster.
Actually, Clyde Irwin and Hunter's Creek L is not ready. One just came in...
Northwood?
Northwood, I mean, Northwood Park, yeah. Were not cleared yet. And we asked them that yesterday because we know we can put them back in. But fortunately for their sake, they're better off than we are because they've only lost five instructional days because they were on mid-session, intercession during the time. So, but that was one of the things we asked them to look at to see if we can, you know, jumpstart at least getting those threes back in like we did with the early college because Community College wasn't as bailed off as we were.
So make one comment. And I'm sure that master detailed itemized list per school will come. We all need to remember that once Florence hit, that our staff... We all need to remember that once Florence hit, that our staff didn't, didn't come back until like two weeks later. Is that correct? At least a week after? If not, well, the second week.
Yeah, all our maintenance people weren't here.
So there was nobody here to do anything. We were still in shell shock, and I think still are. But I think that list is gonna come once you get with the LGC and so forth, which is required. But, um, the storm did not discriminate. It, it never does. We didn't have the people to do the paperwork because these folks have been working 24/7, 24/7 just to respond to this emergency. And I'm not looking for detailed reports right now. Get out there and assess and so forth, assess everything accordingly to when you can go in. But that list is gonna come, and I think it's gonna be very interesting. Right now, everybody's just working around the clock to get everything ready to get us kids back as quickly as possible.
I, I want to be clear. I'm not asking for a detailed report, but the insurance adjusters and the insurance companies will be looking at that as well as the local government commission. That's the reason that I asked the question, is because I understand that from a, from a business standpoint, they're not just gonna pay the claim because we say we have a loss, so we have to back it up, the documents. And the sooner we can complete those, the sooner the process of the loan monies and the other monies coming in. That's the other reason I brought it up.
I understand.
It's not the judiciary, any work that anybody within the school district has done to date, all right? So I just want to make that sure clear, because I'm not picking on anybody, but I understand the business process has to take its shape, and that's where I'm coming from, from a business standpoint as opposed to an educational. All of that has to fit hand in glove. We can't have the kids back in there until we get the schools fixed, and we can't get the schools fixed until we get the, all the proper paperwork and the stuff that will require to get the money or the reimbursements for that to keep us.
Well, I think Rick reiterated today to the commissioners that that list would be coming.
We're in the business of educating kids.
I've got a question about this, and I, Rick, I don't know if you said it in this meeting or if I heard it somewhere else, but I, I know that the government, the legislators probably could allow 0% loans for us.
Well, that's what I was saying, they've already provided 0% loans for new school construction in, in areas like ours now. My request back to them will be, can they do the same for repair work to be completed? Because when you look at 125 million, for us, that's four schools, that would basically be four new schools, but we need that much money in order to, even though a lot, a lot of that will be paid back by insurance, but just having the ability to have a low interest or zero interest loan that we talked about, the LGC, you know, the LGC is nice, but if they can, if the general assembly can, you know, streamline that to us, that would probably be our best way of going about it.
And just to clarify, that, those would be funds that would have to be borrowed by the county.
Okay, that was my next, yeah, that was my next question.
I wish we could, I wish we could go out for a loan.
Be with the county, but that is, um...
We have no authority to borrow. You were kind enough, or someone was kind enough to send us out a copy insurance policy, and I've gone through that and looked at it quite a bit. And I know that we talked a little bit about, we had some issues with discussions with the adjusters with wind driven grain. And I didn't see an exclusion per se in there that...
There is.
Well, there may be, but it's, it's, it's cobbled in the language.
It is.
I think, I think this is where we're, we're working with the attorney for advice on how to handle that, and I would suggest that we'd probably, that research would be done by our attorney to advise us on it.
Well, the other thing I saw in there was that they don't mediate mold, as most insurance companies don't. And we all know that a large portion of our loss and a large portion of mitigation that we're currently handling is to prevent or to mitigate mold right now. I think we got $30 million assigned to that client.
Well, that line item, 30 million is for mitigation, which can be water extraction and again, I would, I would say that we may be best to hold this discussion right before we get advice from our attorneys to get any further details about that.
Well, I, I bring it up from the standpoint that no matter what happens, we could be facing a, a situation where we have to use other funds, other than insurance funds, for that if they don't cover the claim.
Ken?
Um, you know, these past few days have been heart wrenching, I think, for all of us, and this morning at the commissioners' meeting, thank the Lord for you, Commissioner Bennett. We could have walked away today with nothing. Um, I, I think, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna learn a lot from this. We already have learned a lot, but I tell you what, we're gonna really learn is that you have, we have to prepare for a rainy day. Just the other day, I saw in the paper that the state has a $2 billion rainy day fund. This, uh, this Board of Education, not that long ago, had a $13 million fund balance. That was turned over to the county commissioners. So now we have nothing, and as, as our superintendent, Mr. South says, we are broke. We have used what fund balance we have, we are down to the bare bones. Thank the Lord, the, the, the state pays the salaries and all those, those recurring expenses. Um, we, we've got to think about, this county, the school board has got to think about doing more and preparing for these things that are going to hap- this won't be the last hurricane that hits Anzlo County. We've got to do something about being better prepared financially, and we can do some things in some other areas too. There's plenty, plenty to do in preparing for the next event. But, but I'm really, really concerned that here we are with no fund balance, or what we had was used up in a matter of days. The county has no, no real rainy day fund. I, I don't think so, Royce, I, I'm not sure.
We had a $5 million disaster fund.
Mm-hmm, that's government. So, um, you know, I don't know how far $2 billion, on the state level, I guess $2 billion is really just a drum in the bucket, considering what could go wrong. So, so I, I would certainly challenge all of us to really think in terms of being better prepared financially and every other way for something like this that's going to happen again, maybe hopefully not to this magnitude.
Yes, sir.
I, I realize that this is a very fluent conversation and a fluid process, and, you know, as a pastor of a local church that has a congregation that's displaced and dealing with her justice, you know, at the conclusion of every Sunday morning message, the question is posed to me, when are we gonna get back in the sanctuary? With that said, given the gravity of the funding and, are we at a point now to where we can communicate to our parents so they can begin to start making plans as far as how far a student may have to travel to a different school? How it will impact when they eat lunch, or will lunch become an early breakfast? You know, daycare, after-school care? Have we gotten to a point to where we can begin to communicate at least a tentative, what that may look like, so parents can start at least tentatively kind of conceptualizing?
Reverend Churchwell, that's a good question. That's a question that my staff has been asking every single day. Dr. Folger just smiled because she barrages me with 10 or 15 questions based off those issues, and it's been painfully because it changes because of dates and, and the cleaning, cleaning of schools and, and knowing which schools will be used, not used, to get a defined answer for that. So, yesterday was the first time we've had everybody in the room so we can have a better picture of what that looks like, as, so we can prepare to try to get something out to the community by the end of the week to kind of know where we're heading in that direction and give them some more information. Brent, Mr. Anderson over there has, has talked to us about how we're gonna communicate that out to parents as we move forward so they can have an idea of what's going to transpire. I mean, we have some districts that are gonna be in really good shape, and we're gonna have some school districts that are gonna have more than their percentage not in school when, when we start putting everybody back together again.
I have a couple of things I wrote down just in, in thinking, and, um, you know, we receive about $4.7 million a month, is that correct, from, from our local current, for our local current expense fund? And we all received all of the maintenance requests that were going to be honored this year. I don't know now if that's going to put some of those priorities in a different category. If so, can we use, I'm just throwing this out, can we use some of that money to do some of this work?
We're looking at, at all avenues we have to go down to address this situation.
Okay. Then another question is, today was brought up by Chairman Bright about taking funds from the regional center and reallocating them. I, I don't know, I think that should be a board action because that's our project that's supposed to open in January. I don't know if we won't, I know today's not the day to have that, but we're gonna have to make that decision if on the advice of, recommendation of our superintendent and our finance officer, if that's what we plan to do. Or can we do it and it not affect the opening of that school? I don't know. That's, just, just throwing that out for the board, something to think about. Uh, the other thing is, what about, the state is paying salaries for 20 days, is that correct? What are we doing for the rest of that time? That's another thing that, that this board's gonna have to have a conversation about. So it goes further than just getting those schools ready, which is our priority, but those other items are part of a budgetary process that, that Jeff is, is trying to find the money for. Any other comments? Now's a good time to, let's lay it out on the table, guys. We, uh, we might not have another time to be like this together.
There are a lot of problems that this hurricane has created. We heard talk this morning about delaying two or three schools. Now, that's just not practical at this point. We're bustin' to the seams. I, I don't even know why that was part of the conversation. I understand it, it all goes to the bottom dollar of what they could provide us. But with the state, and, and the other thing is, we, we're gonna have to look at our 20-day, if we ever get to 20 days, if we ever get to the 20-day count, I suspect we're going to see a serious decline in our enrollment. So that is something that we'll have to take a look at, because we may have people that have decided, "I'm just not going to put up with this," and have left the area in a permanent status. It's something we'll have to look at, but it's also something that we have to look at in a total thing. This isn't gonna be solved overnight. We can't solve it at this board meeting today. We couldn't solve it at the commissioners' meeting. We're gonna have to continue working with our local, state, federal officials. I, I think we have to bend everybody's ear that we can get, but I think the crux of this lies with the legislature. The legislature can, this is a, the insurance fund is a state program. It was created by the legislature. The legislature has the power and the authority to go back in and direct certain actions with regards to that. They also have the purse strings to that $2 billion rainy day fund. So I think it's imperative that we continue to work with not only our legislators, but the legislators in the other county that are affected so that we can make sure that those monies are freed up sooner than later.
Other comments? Staff, you, have any comments you'd like to make, buried from a personnel issue, anything you'd like to say?
Yesterday, we met the 20-day for our staff and faculty, so if, if we don't receive any more relief in terms of, you know, days being waived, from this point on, we would have to be making those up somehow, within the 215 days for 10-month employees, so... And on the other side, with students and the calendar, even though the days have been waived, we've also discussed the fact that students still need to be able to have that curriculum shared with them, so with the integrated test coming up. So even though the days have been waived, that doesn't mean that we might not be taking some of the workdays, moving those out, changing those over into instructional days, but then also for the employees, keeping that within the 215-day work year, so...
What about employees like cafeteria workers, bus drivers, custodians?
So, up to this point, um, the way that the bill was presented and passed, it's not state law, um, they would be paid, and, you know, September, we made our payroll in September, we're gonna make it in October, so everybody gets paid as if they were working. But once we go out beyond that 20 days, then it becomes for us a little bit fuzzy because, especially for hourly employees, because if we, if we're not making up the days for students, then those are the days that those employees would be working. So we're gonna have to make a decision, and the days are going by, you know, each day makes it a little more difficult for us to make that time back.
Can we use any of those workers and pay them to help with the cleanup? I know some of them already are.
Some of them already are. We have about 200, about 200 of our employees working now.
Of the 50 point, 56.5 million dollars that's allocated by the legislature, 5.6, 6.5 million is to pay that 20-day window, isn't it?
Cafeteria.
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 For cafeteria.
For cafeteria.
That's state, that's statewide.
We, we shared some information preliminary on our immediate needs with the county commissioners this morning with regards to 50-some million dollars. To my knowledge, that hasn't been provided to our board, has it?
It was emailed out several days ago, I believe.
The 50 million dollars or the entire, the PowerPoint?
Uh, the three documents that...
It was.
It was the PowerPoint.
That I handed out to them, I think all three of those documents were, they have copies, wouldn't have to...
From where?
Make sure you're on the email list. More importantly, my payroll, I think. We got you covered.
One question that, and this conversation has probably already been, been had, have we explored department or seen if the base has any space that we could properly utilize?
I've had conversations with the data, it just doesn't exist. Should Dr. Folger update about the pop-up, the, what, the part of the instructional?
Sure. Once it was determined that we were not going to be able to start school as soon as we had hoped, staff mobilized very quickly to provide learning opportunities out in the community. So we looked at all the townships, we looked at community buildings, churches, et cetera, that were open. This week, we have about 1,400 students participating in what we're calling pop-up learning sessions. Those are learning activities focused around the curriculum for our students. Additionally, about 200, 300 of those were art-related, and about 100 were dual-language immersion-related. That's just this week. In addition to that, we have college prep, college applications are due, so we're holding sessions in townships, and schools are also helping with having counselors there to help with college applications, having teachers volunteer to read essays. We have our Title I bus that we've kind of renamed as College Application Week in community, and it's going out and parking in the community with computer access for our students as well. Did inquire this morning, as we find that what our schedule is for next week, those opportunities will continue. We have had a great response, and we've had more parents and students interested than when we've been able to accommodate at this point. I do want to commend our teachers who really have reached out to our students. We had about 190 teachers involved with those pop-up sessions, and we've also, you all have heard stories of teachers meeting their classes at the park, principals having socials for all the kids, popsicles in the park, high schools meeting, I've heard of the AP classes meeting, math teachers having their students in, working with their math, so doing what we can do along those lines. We're also looking at what kind of state or local policies that we may need to ask for waivers, whether that includes testing, the 25% that EOCs or end-of-course exams count towards students' grades. What about field testing, kind of getting that taken off? We're looking at all sorts of dates that our students would be impacted. Also looking at how we can compact the curriculum, so even though we're gonna try to make up as much time as we can, it's probably impossible to make up all the time, and so how do we begin to compact the curriculum so that the most important content is taught and by our, by our students? So, our teachers are really doing a lot of good work. We have also encouraged principals to encourage their teachers that not everything has to come through us, that if they are a member of an organization, to work with that organization to get opportunities out in the community as well. And this is something that I hope we'll be able to continue doing even after the hurricane because of the response we've had from our community.
Rick, what can the community do? Rick, what can the community do to assist us and can they assist us in any aspect of this, either through the cleanup, and that goes to the teachers as well? Can you, can you discuss?
Well, somewhat allowing the Marines in is a little different scenario because they cannot come in with their uniforms, but obviously from a liability standpoint, it's easier for them to come in if approved by their commander or in that situation. But having a volunteer coming in out of school with the liability issue for them to come in and help clean schools, to volunteer in situations like that, obviously, we welcome that. But to advance our schools to opening in that respect, we're not able to do it just because of the liability and insurance purposes for somebody else to come in. That's not an employee.
Okay, so it's not for lack of wanting community involvement, it's a.
No, I've had a bunch of people that want to volunteer to actually want to go in and help clean, but the problem is, again, slip, fall, get hurt or get sick. And liability wise, we're, you know, it's an issue for us in that. And that was one of the questions I asked Colonel Davis, who's helping us with the command over there, about those issues. It's a little different.
And one other thing, Dr. Folger, I would like to thank the board for your vote. Everywhere that I go, I hear senior parents and senior students thanking us for relieving them of the senior graduation project. They have enough to deal with right now without dealing with that.
That being said, Paul, I guess everybody around this table and in this room should know that our students aren't sitting at home watching soap operas and watching cartoons either, but they are out in the community and they want to work. They really do and they don't mind doing those sweaty tasks of raking a yard or digging a ditch or moving limbs. They are out there working and we need to make sure that in November, when we have our large meeting, our regular meeting, that we mention that because that really is worth not doing the graduation project if they could do that every day, helping their, their community.
Are there any action items that we need to take at this meeting or are the hiring process of the two alert, attorney firms are within review of what we've already authorized?
Well, we thought at first that we would have to make that decision if Rick brought it to us. Mr. Irwin has said that he does have the authority to do that.
The attorney for the county asked me to ask the board to authorize your superintendent to enter into an inter-local agreement about this $5 million advance from the county. So I think the superintendent is able to do that, but since I was asked to pass that on, I'm doing that.
Okay, well, this time I'd like to have a motion to allow Rick to enter into a inter-local agreement with the county government for the $5 million they're willing to loan us at this time.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion?
That was quick, wasn't it?
Yes, yes, sir.
I probably wouldn't use the word loans that they appropriated to us. It's not a loan they're appropriating, however.
Well, in the agreement, it said we have to patray it back. That's kind of a loan to me.
We're, well, I've not read the agreement, but.
I haven't prepared yet.
The commitment was to make that available to us through their funding and of course, we're continuing to work for reimbursements through insurance and FEMA and state funding and all that that would, that could go against that. But I guess ultimately if.
Well, I'll rephrase the motion that we will to allow Rick to enter into an inter-local agreement. He will bring that back to us to review. Everybody has said that we could have, we had a motion and a second and everybody seemed anxious, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Anything else? Mr. Ridge?
No.
Mr. Pittman?
I'd just like to say that my main concern was internet connectivity. Our folks have been in 28 of the buildings. Connectivity is up, wireless is up. We're in good shape there when the kids walk back in the school to be able to use technology right away.
Good, good.
And how about the PAs and the intercoms and all?
The schools have been checked in all the schools except the teen schools that are on the major list that we haven't been able to get access to. About everything on the minimum and everything in the moderate, our folks have already tested out.
What about the scoreboards? That's what everybody's calling me about.
That's what they're calling about.
If there are no other business or items, just to discuss, I appreciate this. We have a meeting scheduled for Monday, the 15th. I don't know that we need that meeting at this time, so if you don't mind, I'm going to go ahead and post, I'm going to cancel that meeting. And then if we do need to come back together, we'll do it as an emergency meeting because we, it will be an emergency. It will not be something that we could plan for. So okay with everyone? I don't need a motion or a second on that, but I just would like to, you know, to have your opinion. Motion to adjourn?
A motion is a motion.
And a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is adjourned.